With that being said, I would like to ask council members if they would like to share some thoughts at this point. Would you like to leave?
I'm not very good at talking off the top of my head, so I need to write things down, too. I realize that what I'm about to say is not to change anyone's mind or to convince anyone of anything. I think the folks in and around Lewisburg have their minds made up, one way or another. Rather, I offer to the voters of Lewisburg the assurance that I have given my full time and devotion to understand the issues at hand to the best of my ability and worked very hard to imagine the potential effect my vote might have on our community. I looked at this somewhat theologically, although I have no credentials. It's the only way I know how to look at such important issues. More than any other personality trait in my life, all-or-nothing, yes-or-no thinking has caused me to make huge mistakes and bad judgments. I have hurt people and myself. I have withheld love in misinterpreted situations. Yes-or-no thinking is not wrong in itself and is very necessary at times, but it is completely inadequate for major questions and dilemmas of life. Why do we do this to ourselves, to one another? We don't know what -- don't we know that every viewpoint is a view from a point? I recently was in a minister's office discussing the ordinance. He was very generous and trusting and honest in our conversations, and for that, I'm very grateful. I saw all the books in his office. The bookshelves were full. There were hundreds of volumes. And I foolishly asked him which volume was the most important to his understanding, and of course, he replied the Bible. But I know that it takes all the rest of the books to understand the mysteries which lie within the Bible. Having some of the information is never having all the information. I thank all of you who have sent letters through City Hall, called me, conversed with me, both for and against. I thank those of you from the LGBT community who tolerated my questions and were so gracious in your answers of explanation. Thank you to the clergy from several denominations for engaging in conversation, sharing your insights and thoughts and stories. I thank WAB Som for the use of this wonderful facility and the city employees who have helped tonight and Chief Stover and the Lewisburg Police Department. When I saw their police, some sheriffs and state troopers, thank you very much. As I reflect on it all, trying to assimilate it, I try calmly to observe and understand my inner turmoil and dramas without rushing to judgment. Often at the end of a conversation, a person from the S side would lead me with the final sentence, "Joseph, I know you'll do the right thing." And then I'd be approached by someone from the N side, "Joe, I know you'll do the right thing." "Well, what is the right thing?" I asked myself. I listened intently to everyone who was willing to speak to me. In my listening, I hope to hear that still quiet voice or an articulate voice who could explain how to deal with the pain and distrust and suspicion which will be left in one community or another at the culmination of the vote tonight. We are not alone. Many communities are dealing with the issues of identity and difference, and I trust it is just as difficult for them. I have come to believe that the process by which we deal with these culture clash issues today and in the future will determine who and what we are as a community. I have heard people's fearful concerns and understand that while fear may keep us vigilant, it's also fear that keeps us apart by making it difficult to enter into meaningful dialogue. I am very grateful to my fellow council members and the different perspectives they offer in discussion, which will be made quite clear and evident as they offer their thoughts and insights this evening. My experience in City Council is that the members of council are very much interested in cooperation and not confrontation. We have had a citizen approach us to amendments to the ordinance, as we already talked about tonight, and I'm very happy that Jesse Wills, our city attorney, has been in communication with him. I'm still unclear as to who in the community he represents, but by virtue of the fact that he is involved is encouraging to me as a connection with the conservative faith community. In my research, I read on a website of one of our local churches, the statement that "God created man in His own image and is mindful of Him, and therefore, every individual possesses dignity and is worthy of respect and Christian love." Likewise, in my church, I am also called to strive for justice and peace among all people and respect the dignity of every human being. The proposed ordinance 254 does not condone nor condemn any group or their personal behaviors. It does clearly state its purpose is to assure equal opportunity in the areas of employment and public accommodations as declared a human or civil right. It has been said by Pope Francis, and I quote, "Mercy is essential because all men are sinners and in need of God's forgiveness and grace." He goes on to say that it's especially necessary today at a time when humanity is wounded and suffering from many slaveries of the third millennium, not just war and poverty and social exclusion, but also fatalism, hard-heartedness, and self-righteousness. Nobody wins this confrontation if we leave here with anger, distrust, and suspicion. Being put in this position has left me feeling humble, sad, and small, knowing that many of my neighbors, coworkers, and friends will feel alienated and betrayed regardless of the outcome. My hope is that we have planted a seed for calm, rational discourse in the future as we deal with culture clashing issues. We, members of your city government, the mayor, and council, are your neighbors. We are not professional politicians. We don't get to go to Washington, D.C. after our vote. We will go home tonight and to work tomorrow. We will go to church and to the farmer's market. We will take our children to school and sit in the stands at ballgames or the theater. We'll go to GBT, the library, Carnegie Hall, and the grocery store. You saw us at the music festival this weekend, and you will see us at the chocolate festival and the literary festival in Itut. We march in parades. We eat in the local restaurants. We get our hair cut in our favorite shop. We live here. It is our home, too. We and our families, as you, must live with the consequences of any and all decisions we make. I promise you, we do not take them lightly.
I commend you all for coming here tonight and for sharing your perspectives. I also have a hard time speaking off the cuff, so I've prepared a few comments. I grieve deeply that this issue has become such a divisive one in our community. After spending the past seven weeks carefully considering this ordinance, I don't believe that it should be. In the time since I first read ordinance 254 in early to mid-December, I have posed and received answers to legal questions, met with and listened to members of this community, including supporters and those who oppose the ordinance, have sought the counsel of a variety of experts, including medical professionals, attorneys who deal in criminal and constitutional matters, housing experts, professionals who work with child and adult victims of domestic violence and sexual abuse and assault, clergy from a variety of denominations, people who live in jurisdictions where similar policies already exist, including other cities in West Virginia, the state of Maryland, and Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, have read every email and letter that I have received in opposition and in support, and have spent a great deal of time pondering, praying, and contemplating different perspectives. Although I have considered input from others, I have not been led on this issue by any individual or any group. My research has been my own, performed on my own time by myself, and was done in an effort to thoroughly understand this ordinance. I don't share this information in an attempt to claim that I'm an expert on the contents of this ordinance, but instead to share with the community that I'm taking my role seriously. That is my task, to listen to citizens but also to research the issue as completely as I'm capable. I feel confident that I have tried my best to understand the issues that surround ordinance 254 and to look at those issues as objectively as possible. Thank you.
So today, I sat down and tried to prepare a statement, but I'm not going to read from the statement. I have looked at over 700 emails, texts, messages, have answered dozens and dozens of phone calls, and I have members of my family who are gay. So I have to admit that when this started, I was more slanted toward the LGBT community. But as I listened to more and more people come forward with their concerns on both sides, I found my heart was cracking open with grief at the divisiveness that this has brought to the community. I've spent many sleepless nights with this issue, and my heart understands both sides. It really does. I know transgender people. I know gay people. I know straight people. I know bisexual kids. I have friends from all over the country who grapple with all of these issues. And for me, it comes down to feeling in my heart very deeply that it is a human rights I hear members of the community say it's not a civil rights issue, but I feel like all people living in Lewisburg are entitled to the same basic human rights, including our sons, daughters, brothers, sisters, mothers, fathers, uncles, aunts, cousins, and friends of the LGBT community and the straight community. I feel like members of the conservative religious community have a right to practice their religion, but I don't feel like those religious beliefs should be allowed to set up an environment where people will be discriminated against who do need protections. So for me, it comes down to being a matter of basic human rights, even though I understand both sides, and I have really, really grieved and researched the matter, and I've come -- I've found myself growing closer with all the members of council and coming to understand all their different perspectives and where they come from. And even though I don't get to vote on this matter unless there is a tie, I feel like I have come to love this community even more deeply. And I feel like maybe now I'm rambling, but my heart is with you all, and it's just such a tough decision, and I just wanted you to know that it's not been an easy place for this council to be.
I play guitar, so I need a mic stand. Just to echo something that Shannon brought up, I don't think I've ever been more proud of this council than I have in the past two months, three months now. A tremendous amount of research has been going on behind the scenes. 700 emails, I think you said, you received, sharing most of those with us daily. And it's been a very intense few weeks for everyone here, as everyone's mentioned. But, you know, I want to agree with something Martha said. I really wish we could have all sat together, because I don't think it's us and them, but it's we as a community. I think that's -- we need to remember that when we walk out the doors tonight. We're still one community. And, you know, I find myself asking some questions when I did some of my research. When you look at the nondiscrimination ordinances that happened in Huntington or Charleston or Morgantown or Harpers Ferry, there wasn't a huge turnout of people. There was not this backlash against the ordinance. Most of them passed unanimously. And so what changed? Does anyone know what changed? Two -- two -- it's a rhetorical question. I can give you my answer. I think it is, but I just want to throw it out there. But, you know, I actually brought this to council two years ago, and at the time, we went through a resolution to encourage the state to do this exact same thing. They failed us. And here we are, two years later, and there's a movement amongst the state legislature to go the opposite direction. And as a lifelong West Virginian, a lifelong Southern West Virginian, someone who's been here for over 10 years, that's not the West Virginian I want to see. Move them forward. That's me. Someone said that this ordinance is creating division in the community. It did not create division in the communities of Charleston, Huntington, Morgantown, Harpers Ferry, Sutton, Thurmond. Why are we here? Why are we using middle detectors to come into a building? It's crazy.
I don't have a prepared statement, but I'll run through some bullet points that I made during the meeting and have considered since the ordinance was brought before City Council. Part of it will be kind of a question and answer with the city attorney, maybe with the chief of police, but try to share some insight in terms of the process I went through in the consideration of this ordinance. First, I'd like to echo something that Charlie Urb said earlier, that this is not an ordinance about bathrooms. So my first question to city attorney Jesse Wills is, based on your research, are there any municipal, state, or federal codes or statutes which govern access to bathrooms? Is there anything in this ordinance that changes anything related to access to restrooms?
The change is gender identity and sexual orientation now is included under the definition of sex.
I think, let me clarify. When I talk access, I'm saying who can go into it. From my interpretation, the ordinance, what the ordinance does is provide protection against discrimination or harassment in the bathrooms. It does not offer access that is not already there.
That's correct.
Is there anything in the proposed ordinance that changes the enforcement of sex crimes or assault or sexual abuse based on the definitions of gender identity or sexual orientation?
Nothing changes.
Chief Stover, will you or your police department enforce, investigate, or enforce reports of assault or sexual crimes in any different manner tomorrow, should the ordinance pass than you did yesterday?
Nothing.
So in considering the ordinance, what I'm left with is what is printed on the T-shirts and what is printed on the signs is fear mongering, and it's not based in a review of the information. I feel compelled to correct that misinformation. Also, I'd like to say that sexual predators committed crimes before this ordinance, and they will commit crimes after this ordinance. And I think it's an injustice to the LGBT community to try to draw some sort of relationship or analogy that indicates that they are the sole perpetrators of those types of crimes. I don't believe the facts bear that out.
You didn't say that, Bill.
Excuse me. You had your turn. It's now my turn. Sitting up here, I'm not going to say to you that I'm not a flawed individual. I will admit I'm a flawed individual. I have my prejudices and biases. I deal with those every day, but I can tell you that although I'm nervous up here, my mind is at ease with the decision I'm going to make. Thank you.
I wrote mine down because I'm the emotional one in council. That's because of my love for all of God's people. Thank you all for your interest in ordinance 254. The interest in this ordinance has kept me awake at night. First, I would like to point out that we are not a copied-and-paced city council. We all have our own opinions and thoughts, and we respect each other for our differences. I would be hard-pressed to believe that the mayor or any of the other council members and recorder and our attorney have experienced discrimination. I grew up doing segregation and immigration. I have been discriminated against in the workplace, so I know firsthand what discrimination looks like, sounds like, and feels like. As a mother, grandmother, and childcare worker over 20 years, children are and have and always will be an important part of my life. I have taken care of people's children that people didn't want. I have worked with all of God's children, yes, even a transgender child. Everybody is somebody's child. How do you want your child to be treated? When I was stopped in a store on the street and people were giving me their opinions regarding ordinance 254, and I would make the statement that everybody is somebody's child, how do you want your child to be treated? Those people hesitated to respond, and when they did, they attempted to give me scripture to prove their point. Not one person answered the question, "How do you want your child to be treated?" The adults that seemed to be the biggest topic of this ordinance began as a child. They didn't just become adults overnight. They grew up from a baby, and Psalms 139, verse 13, says, "For it was you who formed my inward parts; you knit me together in my mother's womb." Verse 14 says, "I praise you, for I am fearfully and wonderfully made." That tells me that God already knew who all of us were going to be. Children know who they are, and they can and will tell you who they are. We as adults just need to listen to them. Any decision I make for the children, I make it for the children. I make it for my grandchildren, because I want to be able to look them in the eye to say, "I have done the right thing." Because I speak for the children, because they cannot speak for themselves until they are older. I make my decisions for the children today and the children that will be born in families to come. I will always stand for all of God's children. Thank you.
I hope you get some sense of the active deliberation and soul-searching that's gone on in the consideration of this ordinance. It has been an incredibly heart-wrenching process over the last seven weeks. The amount of work that City Council has done, I will echo council member Baldwin's remarks, has been amazing just in watching it, watching the deliberations and trying to get a handle on this. There was a lot of unknowns. I would suspect that I'm not unlike a lot of folks in grappling with language related to transgender people. I can't -- I mean, it does not roll off my tongue easily. It is a foreign concept, and to work with the language such that -- but what I learned is that in addressing people who are different, if you are not careful using the language, the appropriate language, you cause greater hurt. And so I try and be a little more mindful of that. But that has been an educational process for me that still continues. One thing that I think we need to recognize, and council member Edmonds' question to the chief of police, I think is indicative of the entire council's effort. Everyone up here, everyone in this room, has the same sense about child predators, that they are the lowest of lowlifes within our society, and that the effort, whether it was yesterday or today, with or without this ordinance, still remains eternal vigilance on the part of families, on the part of neighbors, on the part of everybody watching out, make sure that the next generation is protected. People who are most at risk need those sets of eyes to protect people as they grow, as they age, and as they deal with their infirmities. The with or without this ordinance, our police and the judicial system are committed to addressing all complaints regarding people who are suspected of public deviancy anywhere they happen in the city, including public restaurants. That is something that I hope that anytime anyone has seen or has been made aware of a problem in a public space, whether it's a restroom or not, that they have taken the extra step to report that to the management of the store and report that to the police department, because only by vigilance like that and reporting of that do you have a chance of reducing the incidence of that. This has been a very difficult, very difficult piece. I think that everyone sitting up here on the stage tonight has grappled with this, the efforts of the city attorney in the midst of a lot of his own health issues. It's been exemplary, and I really appreciate all the efforts and approach and consideration that everybody has given. Before us this evening, there are several items, several ways that City Council can proceed. We've had the public hearing. There is a second reading of the ordinance by law. You can read the ordinance by title if you choose, if that's the way the amendment, if it's written that way. You can choose to read it in totality. You can read the -- on a six-page document that has been out there, the vast majority of it. it, for quite some time at 12:15 at night. I believe that the reading of the ordinance by title would be a little more appropriate. But there are several things that council can choose to do tonight. Council can turn down and vote against it on second reading, effectively killing the ordinance. Council can table it to delay action of it for further information, setting a date, any of a variety of ways that things can be tabled and the reasons why. Council can approve it as is, as was presented and passed on first reading in December with no changes, and they can pass it that way. Or council can choose to amend it and then decide whether they wish to pass the amended version or not. The city attorney has presented and gone over each of the items of proposed amendments. Took quite a bit of legal research and listening to other legal experts to come up with that language, the intent of which is to address some of the core things that we heard of in the feedback and emails by many of the people in this room, that the question of religious freedom and freedom of speech needed to be specifically protected within this ordinance. And that's why the language reflecting that was put into it. Those are the two major additions that you saw in that. The intent of this ordinance is not to tell preacher Comer what he can do or cannot do and preach and second-guess him as a professional man of the cloth. The intent of this is to protect unprotected people in public accommodations, including housing and employment. With that said, I will ask council if they, what their preference is regarding the fate of this ordinance.
I think, for me, I think procedurally, I would prefer to examine some of the amendments a little further before any motion be made. Fair enough. Well, if I may, Jesse, just to clarify a few things that we have in front of us, and I'll read this for the audience in case you don't have these amendments, that they don't affect. So the preamble, we inserted the third section. Jesse's already read it, but I'll read it again for the record. Where as an inclusive city must recognize the rights of persons of all races, religions, colors, national origins, ancestry, sex, age, blindness, disability, familial status or sexual orientation and gender identity, to be free of the exercise and expression of their beliefs, values, and relationships. Can you explain a little bit more about where that language came from?
The language was provided by an interested citizen of Lewisburg, who also is an attorney and an attorney that practices considerable constitutional law in Feral Court. And it was his recommendation that it was just increasing the understanding of what the intent of the ordinance would be after the preamble.
Is that part of the preamble taken from a carve-out from the Supreme Court?
I don't know that a carve-out is the Supreme Court necessarily. The preamble is not part of the ordinance per se. I don't think it is.
The preamble is not a direct part of the ordinance in terms of enforcing any provisions in the ordinance. The preamble is an explanation of what is intended within the ordinance.
The definition that we inserted in terms of the bona fide housing occupation definition?
There was a reference in the original ordinance to bona fide occupational qualification, but there was no definition contained in the ordinance. So I recommended that we use, and that definition is based on U.S. Code.
So I clarified some of the language on the amendments. Are there any other questions for either the city's attorney or any questions or clarification? What would be council's pleasure in dealing with the ordinance? The first stage would be, since on the agenda, the consideration of the ordinance as presented, if someone wanted to consider the amendments, the proper process would be to vote in favor of the ordinance 254 as presented. There would be a second that would put it on the table for discussion. Then would be the time, if someone wanted to have discussion, that could include the language on the amendments, that would be the time to propose an amendment to the ordinance as presented. That would have to pass. Then you would have an ordinance that was amended that you would then vote on. So the question would be, move along if you wanted to. You can always, you know, vote it down. If you don't get enough votes for it, doggone it, it dies. So the proper thing for discussion would be, yeah.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to amend ordinance 254 with the amendments recommended by the city council, including the minor typographical error to the last paragraph in the ordinance to remove the language.
There's a motion to amend ordinance 254 with the language provided minus the one typo.
Second.
With a second. Any discussion of the motion to amend the ordinance with that language that we went over just a little bit ago?
Yes, very briefly. I think, just to go back to a comment that was made early in the meeting by Pastor Stanky, and I hope I pronounced your last name correctly, his concern about religious freedom in the First Amendment. The last paragraph of the amended ordinance, which talks about religious organizations, and I'll reread it, the public city attorney read earlier, "With respect to any religious organization, association, educational institution, or society, this ordinance does not apply to the employment of individuals whose primary duties consist of teaching or spreading doctrine or belief, religious governance, supervision of a religious order, supervision of a person's teaching or spreading religious doctrine or belief, or supervision or participation in religious ritual or worship." Paragraph two, this ordinance does not present, sorry, this ordinance does not prevent a religious organization, association, educational institution, or society from restricting membership or access to any of its religious services or activities to those who are members of the same religion. I believe that that language will address the concern that you brought forward earlier during the public hearing.
As we are continuing deliberation over this, I must point out that we are a little bit out of order because the first order of business is to read the ordinance by title. You know, ask the recorder to do that, and then we may consider the other actions.
Ordinance 254, an ordinance to amend Article 137, Human Rights Commission of Part One Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of Lewisburg, West Virginia, to declare public policy for nondiscrimination in employment and public accommodations.
And I will still go back to the original thought of having this go through a motion and a second for discussion, and then have a motion to amend in the new language to the ordinance. So the proper procedure would be to vote in favor of it, to get it on the table, but a motion and a second for ordinance 254 as read and reflected in the recorder's initial reading, then consideration of any amendments at that point. That being the case, I've been once again corrected, and I am big enough to admit it. We would need to rescind the first Edens Baldwin vote to amend the ordinance as presented initially. We had not read the ordinance by title by then, so that would be appropriate way to go.
I will rescind my motion to amend ordinance 254.
Okay, you would take away your, in a second, that. Okay, you have rescinded those motions. Very good. We are now, we have now read the ordinance by title. Then the proper thing would be to accept a motion for the, for ordinance 254 in its original form. Who would like to make that motion? Probably moved and seconded to approve ordinance 254 as initially presented. Now we're at the discussion phase of the consideration of that ordinance. Are there any, is there any discussion or amendments that anyone would like to make to the ordinance as presented?
Given that we retain legal counsel, and our legal counsel has offered amendments to ordinance 254, I move that we adopt those amendments and incorporate those into ordinance 254 with the minor typographical issue in the last paragraph.
Motion to amend on the floor is then a second. Seconded by Mr. Lutz. So now we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the amendments to the motion to amend? There are none who will vote on the motion to amend in the language as presented by Mr. Ed. All those in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. The ordinance stands in amended form now. Is there any further discussion on the amended ordinance? Then we will call for the vote on, are there any additional amendments anyone would like to make? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote on the amended ordinance 254. All those in favor of passage of ordinance 254 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. The amended ordinance stands approved.